We are about to start. Testing. We are about to start and I've been asked to remind the public, we have an interpreter, so please keep your talking to a minimum, so he is able to interpret.
Your mic isn't working or something?
Testing. Testing one, two.
It's not loud enough. They'll fix it.
Good evening, one and all. Tonight, we are returning from closed session, and could I have a motion and a second? For closed session, please. Second. Okay, and can I hear the ayes, please?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The ayes have it, unanimous. And in adjournment of closed session, now we are opening, or reconvening, open session. It is 7:00 PM. And tonight, we have a full school board meeting, but first, let's begin with the pledge of allegiance by Boyd Elementary School, third grade student, Karina Monterubio.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be
Thank you, Karina. And now, a group of third grade Boyd Elementary School students from Ms. Donna Hibden and Mrs. Christina Cortez will sing "Hooray For The World." We also want to thank our Boyd principal, Mrs. Kane Corialso, Assistant Principal, Mr. Owen Ross, and our parents and guardians for supporting our students' talents. Thank you, and go Bulldogs. And kids, I'm glad you're on it too, on the world. In case people didn't know, that's the best part of a school board meeting, the kids. Okay. Okay, Dr. Avila, can we have a report of closed session, please?
Yes, yes, sir. We have one correction from our previous board meeting during a readout. It included the wrong staff member or employee number, so that will be corrected right now. So on August 1st, 2017, the Board of Education denied the request for a leave of absence for certificated employee number 1381427, August 10, 2017 through June 30, 2018. The roll call vote was unanimous for those present. Dino Walker was absent, Joseph Martinez, yes, Edgar Montes, yes, Joseph Ayala, yes, Nancy O'Kelly was not in attendance. The Board of Education approved a settlement agreement with Program Management Integration, or PMI. Under the terms of the agreement, PMI will pay the district $300,000.
Yes!
The district, in exchange, the district agrees to dismiss the lawsuit against PMI. The recovered funds will be reinstated into Measure Y and allocated for programs that were at that time budgeted for, including work to be done at Myler High School. The roll call vote was unanimous. Dino Walker, absent, Joseph Martinez, yes, Edgar Montes, yes, Joseph Ayala, yes, and Nancy O'Kelly, yes. The Board of Education accepted the request for a leave of absence for classified employee number 1728237, September 20th, 2017 through December 10th, 2017. The roll call vote was unanimous. Dino Walker was not in attendance, Joseph Martinez, yes, Edgar Montes, yes, Joseph Ayala, yes, Nancy O'Kelly, yes. The Board of Education accepted the request for leave of absence for classified employee number 1990927, October 2nd, 2017 through December 8th, 2017. The roll call vote for those present was unanimous. Dino Walker, not in attendance, Joseph Martinez, yes, Edgar Montes, yes, Joseph Ayala, yes, Nancy O'Kelly, yes. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Joanna Cuellar as continuation high school assistant principal, Myler High School. The roll call vote for those in attendance was unanimous. Dino Walker, not in attendance, Joseph Martinez, yes, Edgar Montes, yes, Joseph Ayala, yes, Nancy O'Kelly, yes. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Gilberto Enriquez Pulido, high school assistant principal, Eisenhower High School. The roll call vote for those present was unanimous. Dino Walker, not in attendance, Joseph Martinez, yes, Edgar Montes, yes, Joseph Ayala, yes, Nancy Gio Kelly, yes. That's all we have.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. Okay, adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. Vote was unanimous. Presentation. Eisenhower High School student Miguel Hernandez, national recognition. And Ms. O'Kelly will do that.
Okay, I am very, very pleased to be doing this recognition tonight. Oh, God. All right, there we go. That's better. All right, the Rialto Unified School District has many reasons to be proud of its recent Eisenhower High School graduate, Miguel Mesa Hernandez, but two big reasons that are prominent and timely are his state and national recognitions, both of which Miguel earned in the spring and summer of 2017. Miguel grew up in the city of Inglewood and attended school in the Lennox School District before moving with his family to the city of Rialto just a little over two years ago. He has two older siblings, Marlene and Jose, and one younger sister, Heidi, who attends Frisbee Middle School. Last April, Miguel competed for the state level in the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, FCCLA, competition. He designed a women's dress utilizing recycled plastic. And I believe we have the dress here? That is amazing. Is that cool or what?
Bring it up front.
Yeah, that's...
Go on up there. You want to go up there with your dress?
Okay. He earned the state award and was honored with a medal and cash prize at the Riverside Convention Center. A couple of months later, in July of 2017, Miguel competed at the nationwide level and won the judges over at the National FCCLA Competition held in Nashville, Tennessee. "It was very cool," smiled the somewhat shy, 17-year-old future fashion designer. "I was a little surprised because there were many entries." It took Miguel almost four months to make his award-winning dress that would receive national recognition. "I was creating a dress that I made from construction fencing and plastic. It was all quite fascinating to me and a challenge." When asked if he gets his inspiration from anyone in particular, he smiled, "My mom, Martha, and I guess just me." Then he elaborated, "But I'm inspired by many things around me. I couldn't say it was one particular person. I just know that I like creating, designing, and building artistic pieces, so I had in my own mind that I wanted it to be an elegant dress." "Miguel hasn't been an eagle all four years, and yet he truly represents Eisenhower's core values," replied a proud Eisenhower High School principal, Mr. Scott Sparks. Mr. Sparks, come on up here. "Miguel was able to be successful in his passion because Eisenhower is able to offer a number of pathways, such as fashion, to a diverse community. I am proud of his hard work and dedication to his future." The budding fashion designer who currently works at a pharmacist's office credits Ms. Jennifer Byer, his design teacher at Eisenhower High School, for helping him to pursue his goals. Miguel wants to finish his studies and move to downtown LA to continue his passion as a fashion designer. His upcoming show in September will be held in the city of Torrance, and it will be dedicated and organized by the LGBTQ community. Miguel, we are very proud that you are a product of this district, and we wish you well in the future and believe that you will become a success in your chosen field. Oh, okay. Let's see. You want to explain that one? What's that one made out of?
Plastic shower curtain.
Come up here.
I made a model-style jacket out of a plastic shower curtain and some low-bottom pants out of sheer curtains and a shirt out of a recycled Halloween cape.
This is amazing. I mean, these are beautiful garments, and I'm extremely delighted that he is sharing them with us, and you definitely deserve these prizes. So I would like to present you with this plaque that says, "Rialto Unified School District and its Board of Education is proud of your achievements in both the state and national levels of the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America competition. We commend you for excellence in state and national recognitions in fashion design. Presented to Miguel Mesa Hernandez, Eisenhower High School, Wednesday, August 23rd, 2017." Thank you, Mr. Sparks and Ms. Byer for supporting me, and my mom.
I'm going to have you in the middle. I'm going to have the board members. Mom can hold that. Hold on, Miguel. I need you to smile. I need you to pretend you're happy right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel.
Our students never cease to amaze me. Okay, we're coming to the comments, and I was asked to remind the public that we have an interpreter, so please keep your comments to a minimum, so he is able to interpret. Remember, it takes him a little bit. You talk, interpret, talk, interpret. Yes, you're right. Sorry, thank you. Mr. Ayala, would you please honor Ms. Isabel Davidson with your posthumous tribute?
Before I get started, I'd like to mention that some of my favorite adults came from the nutritional service department of the schools that I attended when I was a young person. I can still remember the milk and the graham crackers. We used to open up those milk cartons and dunk the graham cracker. It was a great time of the day that I experienced, and I'll never forget that. So with that in mind, we are honoring somebody from that department. And if we can have the family, please join me up here. The podium?
Mr. Ayala, can the principal associate?
Absolutely. What a good-looking family.
And a great principal.
We are honoring Mrs. Isabella Davidson. We're remembering her. Mrs. Davidson, as you heard at the beginning of this meeting, was a beloved Rialto community parent volunteer and worked 29 years as a nutritional service worker, mostly serving students at Hugh Banks Elementary School, where countless students affectionately called her Grandma. Mrs. Davidson passed on August 9, 2017, at the age of 69, and you see up here at the podium, her family who will miss her greatly. And on behalf of Rialto Unified School District, we honor our employees, and so we're going to pass on this beautiful plaque to the family. And I imagine you're the next person in charge here, and if you would like to say anything, the mic is yours, and if not, that's okay too.
Mr. Ayala, if you'd like to use the mic, that's fine too.
Okay. Let me see if my glasses will work, because I'm definitely going to need them. Yes. I'll do my best with this one. The Rialto Unified School District honors Mrs. Isabella Davidson, and I just want to show that right now. There is a picture. I haven't seen too many plaques with the picture on them, for her 29-and-a-half-year service to students, staff, and parents of the district. Mrs. Davidson loved working with the children in the Rialto Unified School District. "So much so," said her daughter Caroline, "that every year she would contemplate retiring, but said she couldn't do it, because she would just miss her students way too much. Many of them called her Grandma, and she loved them for it." She was one of those ladies, I can tell right now just from looking at the picture, was saying, "Here's an extra graham cracker." "Isabella was an outstanding human being who had a passion for students and an awesome relationship with Hugh Banks staff," replied Dr. Monty Stewart, who's over here to my left. "Principal at Hugh Banks Elementary School, she not only cared about serving students' food, but also addressed their emotional needs." And that's awesome, because a lot of these kids, they don't want to eat those green beans, and they get emotional, and when they come up, Grandma says, "It's time to eat them." "Okay, Grandma, I'll eat them." I could just see her doing that for them. If you asked anyone what they loved most about Isabella, they would tell you that her smile and love for life. She positively impacted generations of children within our community during her 29 years of service. She opened Hugh Banks. We will greatly miss her. Mrs. Davidson was born on September 29, 1947, in Hamilton, Scotland. She moved to the city of Rialto in 1973 with her husband, Alexander. Together, the couple raised three children. Mrs. Davidson is survived by her husband of 48 years. Are you here, sir? Right here to my right. Is survived by her husband of 48 years, Alexander Davidson, three grown children, Alexander Davidson. Alexander? Alexander. Pleasure. Heather Watt. Heather. Nice to meet you, Heather. Three grown children, Alexander, Heather Watt, and Caroline Malarkey. Malarkey. It's not just a bunch of Malarkey. Boy, that's a good one. And grandchildren, Cameron Malarkey, 15. Cameron, nice to meet you. Edwin Watt, four. Oh, little Edwin. There he is. And Aiden Watt, two, little one. Oh, terrific. Boy, that's what it's all about. The Rialto Unified School District Board of Education in unity and with the support from Rialto Unified School District Superintendent Dr. Avila dedicates this plaque today, August 23, 2017.
You talk, interpret, talk, interpret. Yes, you're right. Sorry, thank you. Mr. Ayala, would you please honor Ms. Isabel Davidson with your posthumous tribute? Thank you, Ms. O'Keehan.
Before I get started, I'd like to mention that some of my favorite adults came from the nutritional service department of the schools that I attended when I was a young person. I can still remember the milk and the graham crackers. We used to open up those milk cartons and dunk the graham cracker. It was a great time of the day that I experienced and I'll never forget that. So with that in mind, we are honoring somebody from that department. And if we can have the family, please join me up here at the podium.
Mr. Ayala, can the principal also show up?
Absolutely. What a good-looking family and a great principal. We are honoring Mrs. Isabella Davidson. We're remembering her. Mrs. Davidson, as you heard at the beginning of this meeting, was a beloved Rialto community parent volunteer and worked 29 years as a nutritional service worker, mostly serving students at Hugh Banks Elementary School, where countless students affectionately called her Grandma. Mrs. Davidson passed on August 9th, 2017, at the age of 69. And you see up here at the podium, her family who will miss her greatly. And on behalf of Rialto Unified School District, we honor our employees. And so we're going to pass on this beautiful plaque to the family. And I imagine you're the next person in charge here. And if you would like to say anything, the mic is yours. And if not, that's okay too.
Mr. Ayala, if you'd like to use the mic, that's fine too.
Okay. Let me see if my glasses will work because I'm definitely going to need them. Yes. I'll do my best with this one. The Rialto Unified School District honors Mrs. Isabella Davidson, and I just want to show that right now. There is a picture. I haven't seen too many plaques with the picture on them for her 29 and a half year service to students, staff, and parents of the district. Mrs. Davidson loved working with the children in the Rialto Unified School District. So much so, said her daughter Caroline, that every year she would contemplate retiring, but said she couldn't do it because she would just miss her students way too much. Many of them called her Grandma and she loved them for it. She was one of those ladies, I can tell right now just from looking at the picture, was saying, "Here's an extra graham cracker." Isabella was an outstanding human being who had a passion for students and an awesome relationship with Hugh Banks staff, replied Dr. Monty Stewart, who's over here to my left. Principal at Hugh Banks Elementary School, she not only cared about serving students' food, but also addressed their emotional needs. And that's awesome because a lot of these kids, they don't want to eat those green beans and they get emotional. And when they come up, Grandma says, "It's time to eat them." "Okay, Grandma, I'll eat them." I could just see her doing that for them. If you asked anyone what they loved most about Isabella, they would tell you that her smile and love for life. She positively impacted generations of children within our community during her 29 years of service. She opened Hugh Banks. We will greatly miss her. Mrs. Davidson was born on September 29th, 1947, in Hamilton, Scotland. She moved to the city of Rialto in 1973 with her husband Alexander. Together, the couple raised three children. Mrs. Davidson survived by her husband of 48 years. Are you here, sir? Right here to my right. Pleasure, sir. Honored. Is survived by her husband of 48 years, Alexander Davidson, three grown children, Alexander Davidson. Alexander? Alexander? It's a pleasure. Heather Watt. Heather? Nice to meet you, Heather. Three grown children, Heather Watt and Caroline Malarkey. Malarkey. It's not just a bunch of Malarkey. Boy, that's a good one. And grandchildren, Cameron Malarkey, 15. Cameron? Nice to meet you. Edwin Watt, four. Oh, little Edwin. There he is. And Aiden Watt, two. Little one. Oh, terrific. Boy, that's what it's all about. The Rialto Unified School District Board of Education in unity and with the support from Rialto Unified School District Superintendent Dr. Avila dedicates this plaque today, August 23rd, 2017, in honor of Mrs. Davidson's almost 30 years of service to our school district's students. Mrs. Davidson, you were beloved by the many of the elementary students, tummies you fed, and the hearts that you have forever touched. Thank you so much, Mrs. Isabella Davidson, for serving our community. Would anybody from the family like to say anything? Okay, and if not...
Just, she loved everybody. She loved working for the district. Every year, she thought about retiring, but she just couldn't leave her little baby. So she just really loved everybody and thank you so much for the support.
Well said. If everybody would gather around the podium, we can take a picture. I'm going to have you hold it, sir. Okay.
Can I have the board respond, please?
This is... Okay. Here's some film here, some phone, so that... Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you. That was... Oh, no. This is... Thank you. Our condolences to the family of Mrs. Davidson and thank you, Mr. Ayala. That was an excellent presentation. We continue with comments, public comment from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes.
We have several.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I've been here a few times lately to chat with you, ever since we had that very unfortunate incident at Frisbee. And I came tonight just to express something from my heart, mainly its disappointment. Mrs. Davidson is an inspiration and that was a touching presentation, but she was not the only person like that in the school district. This school district is filled with people who pour their hearts into their jobs because our mission here is precious. We are building a civilization by instilling in these children our values and beliefs. I noticed that until this month, the cover of our agenda had some really important information on the inside of it. It said things like, "Under beliefs, all people have equal inherent worth. Each person deserves to be treated with respect. Common goals take priority over individual interest. Integrity is critical to trust. Everyone has the ability to contribute to the good of the community. High expectations for student achievement. We will honor the worth and dignity of each person. We will practice participatory decision-making throughout the district. We will not allow the past to determine our future." I think it's prescient that that is not on the inside cover of this month's agenda because during this tumultuous event at Frisbee Middle School, we thought that we had the attention and the engagement and the involvement of the district management in our plight. And as you well know, that we actually had two representatives from our school meet with the superintendent to discuss specific issues. It wasn't just that one removal of a principal. That was the tipping point. There were seven specific issues that we asked to be addressed in official policy manners. One of them was the maintenance policy, which is really important, but there were others. The superintendent did make the commitment to meet with our representatives a second time and that has not happened. And we haven't seen any policy changes except for one policy on maintenance, which really didn't include the majority of the key elements that we begged to be included to try and prevent a recurrence of the very sad and distressing situation that occurred with the buildings at Frisbee Middle School. I'm a grown-up. I'm a senior citizen now. I should know better than to believe in people, but I want you to know that I'm still heartbroken. I'm still disillusioned, disappointed, and I'm not alone. And I won't give up. I still believe in you guys and I'm hoping to still see these beliefs and this mission carried out. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Michelle Ramirez?
Well, thank you. Good evening. I can't see the paper that way. Okay.
I know, it's very awkward.
Can I move this? Yes. All right, I'll just hold it. Good evening. And tonight, just like Sue mentioned, I wanted to address your acceptance of the revised maintenance policy that you voted on the last board meeting on August 9th, listed under calendar consent items F1 for the buildings and grounds. And last March, we began our challenge to you regarding this policy specifically focusing on accountability and communication. And we asked for communication to the sites and to the person who submitted the work orders, communication after the work order was submitted and also for the work after it was done. And it's so important for there to be a system of checks and balances and accountability. Why should the hard-working employees of our district who live half of their days in these facilities that you maintain be kept in the dark about whether their requests for maintenance are taken care of? Customer care, isn't it the point of customer care to make people feel valued and taken care of? Wouldn't the dialogue between maintenance and your internal customers, those who work their fingers to the bone to make your district successful seem like the least that could be done to make all employees feel valued and cared for? This could be done electronically or in person, and I believe that the IT department already has something like this in place. After the July board meeting and the first reading of the revised policy, we quickly expressed our concern about the utter disregard for addressing any part of the changes that we asked for in the policy. And at that time, we were led to believe that there would be a follow-up discussion and changes to the policy submitted for the first read. However, the exact same revised policy after the second read was accepted and there were no changes to it at all. So why is that? Did you, Dr. Avila, or all of you board members of Rialto Unified, read over that policy and say to yourselves, "This is fabulous. This is a great maintenance policy. I think this is going to benefit everybody." Because seriously, it was shortened down by taking out all the details, combining all the sentences, and then saying the same thing but in different words. And this could have been a great revision lesson in my classroom. I have been having such great difficulty understanding why the leaders of our district are okay with a policy that doesn't include accountability and communication when it comes to the health and safety of our children and staff. And at this point, the only reason I can think of to not have accountability and communication in this policy is because you're afraid that it might make things too transparent or you just really don't care, so you just accept it and just kind of bypass it as quickly as possible. We are trying to help fix a district-wide problem that has greatly affected many already. Employees across the district should not be made, should not just make do or live with because they have lost confidence in you or just don't want to put up the fight. We need a policy that truly makes everyone feel like they matter. So once again, you are leaders. You should care about us. Just because people don't complain doesn't mean there isn't a problem. So we ask you to rewrite the policy and include communication and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lorette Allen?
Just don't touch it. Yeah. I think about that. Boy, you can't see. Okay, I want to start off just like a parent-teacher conference. I got to set up my tippy-toes. I want to say thank you. I got to meet Mr. Bruce. He came to my classroom at Frisbee for back-to-school night. Mr. Muhammad Islam sat with him on my little presentation. It's nice to see someone come from the district to our school. We appreciate it, something little. And I know Rhonda was there also, so I'm going to say appreciate. Okay, I'm going to do this. Okay, I'm here once again to bring attention to the ongoing safety issues at Frisbee Middle School. On our district's website, under core values, it states, "We provide a safe educational environment, perhaps in other schools, but not so much at Frisbee. Since I've been addressing the RUSD board and bringing attention to the toxic conditions in the B Wing, I've repeatedly been put in the position to defend myself. On August 3rd, 2017, I reported to my site to attend meetings, prepare my room. I was super excited. I opened my classroom and it looked exactly the same as it did when I left in March due to the chemical inhalation. I was sent an invoice and was informed that B9 had been totally cleaned. This was far from the truth. A meeting was held in B9 with Mr. Harris, Mr. Alexander, Ms. Islam, Mr. Brinker, Ms. Callaway, and Ms. Davies were present. We discussed that the district paid $725 to a company. Then, luckily, nothing was done. The counters weren't wiped off as it says it was. Everything was on the walls. I was told perhaps they washed the walls in between the posters and the student work." I said, "Well, who cleared my room?" Mr. Harris pointed and said, "Not me." Pointed, Mr. Alexander, "Not me." They said they didn't clear the room and one of them said, "Must have been her, the new principal, Ms. Watson." I replied, "She's brand-new and doesn't even have a clue what's going on." Then I asked when the district was going to clean the air vents. Okay, this is where it gets really hard, y'all. Mr. Harris looked directly at me and stated, "I don't recall you asking for that." I said, "Mr. Harris, you might want to check the numerous work orders that I put in, the school board video, and the meeting we had on May 23rd on C7 with Mr. Harris and Mr. Ramirez." They also continued to explain that the walls were washed, but in between the posters and the desks and the trash on the floor were removed but put exactly back to where they were. There are other teachers in the B Wing who have also been sick with migraines, respiratory infections, coughs that don't go away, headaches, and so on. This started for them, day one back to school. However, they are afraid and intimidated by the RUSD agents. This is unacceptable but true. I'm out there, I'm the one getting intimidated, harassed. My question, why is everything a battle if RUSD is so truly concerned with the health and safety of students and staff? Why do I constantly need to defend myself and have to beg to have my classroom cleaned? And by the way, it's still not. I did get an air quality test in April and found out about it in August, but we did do that. Why do the district agents lie directly to our faces, insinuate that I'm the problem? If the district is afraid that once everyone knows there's asbestos present, it will call an uproar with parents, community, and staff? I've come here numerous times, y'all, offering ideas, solutions, and praise, but to no avail. So all I can say is, what now?
Thank you.
Tobin Brinker?
Good evening. Last year, we had a lot of incidents at Frisbee, as you're aware of. We've been speaking for some time now. And the things that happened at Frisbee encouraged me to get back involved with my union. I used to be on the executive board. I had left for many years, but I ran and I got elected. And I'm a new middle school director. And today was my first executive board meeting with REA. And I'm here to tell you that I am so glad to be back involved with REA. We have 1,258 teacher members in this district. We're strong and we're doing great. At our meeting tonight, we talked about all the many things that we do to help the community. We talked about the Halloween hijinks and how we support that. And we talked about a whole bunch of other activities that we do in the community and how we try to meet the needs of our members, but how we also try to make sure that we're helping out in the community and doing the right thing for kids. And so I just wanted to share that with you tonight. I'm really proud to be back involved with my union and you're going to be hearing more from me. Okay? You're going to be hearing more from me. One of the issues I brought to the union tonight and that they're going to be supporting is we're going to be trying to get books in the hands of every kid in this district, free books, through a nonprofit that I'm involved with called the Inland Empire Children's Book Project. And I'm very excited, as soon as REA heard about it, they were on board. They want to do this. So we have our rep council meeting next Wednesday, where we'll present it to everybody. And we're going to start getting schools signed up and we're going to start getting books into the hands of kids. I'm really hopeful that I'm going to get a chance to sit down with the superintendent and get all of our principals on board because this is something that we should all be doing. Free books for kids. This is a great thing. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. Okay, public comments on the agenda. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes.
We have none.
Okay, thank you. Comments from association executive board members, Rialto Education Association. I don't hear her running down the hall. Okay, we can come back to her if she is here. See? Thank you. CSCA? Welcome?
First, I did want to wish condolences to the Davidson family on behalf of Rialto Chapter 203 membership. And then I did want to announce that on Friday, August 18th, the membership voted and ratified the tentative agreement. And we're just waiting for a signature from President Walker. And it was very successful. Everyone voted. We passed unanimously the first time around. So thank you, everybody, REA, and we look forward to working on our next contract. Thank you.
Thanks for your leadership. That was awesome. Okay, Communication Workers of America.
No comment.
For the public, he wasn't mic'd up. No comment. Okay, Rialto School Managers Association. Alrighty, comments from the superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President Martinez. It's been quite busy the last couple of weeks since our last board meeting. And I am very energized by what I have seen at the schools and classrooms that I had visited since the first day of school. A lot of innovation and the pursuit of excellence are very visible throughout the district. We are still growing in some areas, but the momentum for change will soon close those gaps. And I'm confident with the staff that we have looking at those areas that we need to improve in for them to be able to close those gaps in the very near future. Many of us experienced a historic celestial event this past Monday, August 21st, the solar eclipse. I want to commend the district office staff who participated in viewing the eclipse with the same enthusiasm and spirit of the children and staff members of the schools that created opportunities to partake in this once-in-a-lifetime experience. Thank you to all the principals, teachers, and support staff who budgeted for materials, organized lessons, and coordinated activities to ensure students lived in this historic moment. And speaking of historic, or at least the beginning of a historic moment, I am calling on all third-grade teachers to lead our charge to ensure every third-grade student reads at or above grade level by the end of third grade. This message I have shared in a couple of previous board meetings, but I feel the excitement now that I'm ready to meet with, I believe it's 82, 82 third-grade teachers in the district next week. We'll be sending them an invitation for us to discuss how we're going to roll this out. The idea is there, some concepts are there, but I want their direct involvement in this project because I don't want this to be something that's coming necessarily from the district office, knowing that they know best in those classrooms in terms of what is for kids. And it's really to come and discuss some of the efforts that we can strengthen in how district office or the site administrators can support them in their effort. So while perhaps lofty and to some unrealistic, meeting this goal will offer students opportunities over the years that might not be available to them if they leave third grade not reading at or above third-grade level. But remember, big results require big ambitions and big ambitions require us to think different. If we are to reach our goal, then we must change our thinking. Let us dare to be different. Who cares what others say? If it works, great. Keep in mind that the wildest coats make the best horses. And think of Machiavelli, who had no interest in preserving the status quo. He wanted to overthrow it. Or let us follow Gandhi's advice and be the change that we wish to see in our kids. Me, I'm a hungry fool and there's nothing wrong with that. That was Steve Jobs' advice to a recent Stanford graduating class. He encouraged them to stay hungry and be foolish, not being afraid to explore and to be different. For Rialto, and third-grade teachers in particular, we must first reach a state of personal excellence we must first reach a state of personal excellence by maximizing our work ethic and relentlessly pursuing our creative spirit if we are to reach our goal of having every third-grade student read at or above grade level by the end of this year. We will do it so long as we believe and demonstrate that every student deserves our very best every day. And speaking of work ethic, creativity, and excellence, to tonight's alumni, it's pretty obvious. How can I overlook Miguel Mesa Hernandez? Congratulations, Miguel. You graduated from Ike just a year ago. You are a product of ours and am so proud to commend you and hoping that in the future you will consider designing a perfect suit for me. But I will settle for a tie, so that I can say that Ike graduate and national award-winning designer made it for me. Miguel, thank you for modeling the expectations that I have for our staff and for me. Congratulations once again, Miguel Mesa Hernandez.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. And we continue with comments from the members of the Board of Education. Ms. O'Kelly, would you like to start, please?
Okay, well, apparently our 2017, 2018 school year is off to a great start. I was excited to attend the summer school 2017 graduation ceremony at the Rialto High School Theater on July 19th. I also attended part of the district leadership conference at Rialto Middle School on July 21st to hear an absolutely wonderful keynote speaker. And I know that everyone in attendance was affected in a very positive way by his message. He was, he was really excellent. I also, we received a book about the customer care program and the survey results of the people who've been through the program, I guess, already. And I'm really excited that the surveys are coming back so positive. Most people felt the whole experience was very worthwhile and very relevant, and said they were, the things that they can do right away to fit into that model. So I'm hoping that we see this in full swing. I know we have a couple more sessions coming up before we get everybody trained and in line. On that line, I want to bring up the facilities issue, and I do agree with you that, 'cause I remember from being an assistant principal and a principal, that we definitely need some communication and accountability with maintenance when maintenance requests are submitted. First, that it was received. Second, that it's been completed, or they can give approximate date of completion, and that it was completed. I will be requesting that to happen, because it's very frustrating to not even know if anything's been done yet. And again, the solar eclipse, that was a spectacular event. And on the news and Facebook, there were a bazillion pictures, and they're all gorgeous. It was just, you know, I'm probably not gonna be alive to see another one, so this one was really cool. And I just hope everyone enjoys the rest of their summer. Fall is just around the corner, despite what the temperatures are going to be this weekend. But it is coming, so hold out hope. And thank you all for coming or viewing us tonight on the computer or TV, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member O'Kelly. Mr. Ayala, Board Member Ayala, please.
Well, thank you, Vice President Martinez. Tonight, I'd just like to talk about goals, per se. It is important for us, from time to time, to review our personal goals and professional goals. And I gotta believe that the reason we, we have goals is because it gives us direction. And, you know, without direction, obviously, we wander around amiably and just throwing darts in the air, hoping that you hit a target somewhere. But, you know, we have to take these things a little bit serious. And when you have goals, you know, we, we can dream, okay? And when you dream, you have hope, and at all levels, you know, staff members, parents, kids. We need to dream. We need to have hope, to carry on. It gives us strength. But talking a little more about goals, you know, sometimes you gotta start somewhere with your goals. And you gotta sell it to yourself first. You gotta believe that what you're doing is the right thing. And, you know, the premise is, you're gonna make something better. And maybe your family, you know, they're going to have an easier time, an easier goal, because you have goals. You're gonna make it through high school. You're gonna make it through college. You're gonna get that promotion. You're gonna get that job. These are the type of goals I'm talking about. Sometimes the goals are a little bit different. I'm gonna stay home and help my family, 'cause they need me, and postpone my career. That's very honorable, you know? Not saying what the goals have to be, but, you know, think about what's important. Let people know, you know, stand up. Let them know what you stand for. And if they disagree, remember, your power comes because the goals that you write are meaningful. They're, they're gonna make a difference for somebody. So in summary here, pin up your goals, repeat them loudly, let people know what you're about, and never forget that your goals are written for the benefit of mankind. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share a few words with you.
Thank you, Board Member Ayala. Clerk Montez, please.
Thank you, Vice President Mr. Martinez. First of all, I'd like to just say, good evening. I, I would like to extend our condolences to the family, from my family and I, to the family of Mrs. Isabella Davidson. While 30 years of service, of public service, is truly, is truly a big sacrifice, you know, of her and her family's time to, to this community. So I want to personally thank her family for letting us borrow her for so long to serve, serve us here. I want to, again, congratulate Miguel Mesa Hernandez and his mother, their family. The dresses that they brought out was really, gave us really a glimpse of some of the talent that young man has. And it reminded me of The Nightmare Before Christmas. My kids love that movie, so they're always singing, "This is Halloween." And that's all I kept thinking about when I seen that dress, but what, what awesome talent, you know, to, to take something that's already made and convert it or repurpose it into not just something useful, but something pretty fashionable. So big, big congratulations again to, to that young man and his family. And to Eisenhower High School, really Eisenhower High School's really doing a lot of good things. And I say that without the biggest cheerleader for Eisenhower High School here next to me, but Mr. Sparks and everyone over there's doing an awesome job. Thank you. Keep up the great work. I don't have a whole lot for tonight. I just do want to reiterate that we are working hard to address concerns, not only at Frisbee, but district-wide. This governing board technically only usually meets twice a month to address and to make some decisions that need to be made. But our hard-working staff, starting with our superintendent and all of the leadership here at the district level and district-wide, work just like everybody else, every day, 40-plus hours a week, you know, many times double that, but are really trying their best. So I, again, just want to ask for patience. We haven't forgot about anyone. Mr. Harris and some of the other people in charge of looking into some of the health and environmental issues at the schools are doing a good job at addressing and looking into and testing and doing whatever we have to do as a district to ensure the safety and the health of not only our students, but also the hard-working employees of this district. So I want to thank Mr. Harris and Mr. Islam and everybody at Maintenance, in Maintenance, for really doing a great job of ensuring that the testing is being done where it needs to be done and looking into the concerns that are being brought forward. We've already received numerous reports, not only from state and local agencies, reporting to the district and to this board, that many of those concerns have already been looked at and have been cleared of any real dangers or any real issues that need to be, how would I say, some of those, some of those concerns have been looked at and they've been cleared by professionals and by some of the agencies that have already came onto some of the school sites to take a look at that. And it doesn't mean that we're gonna stop there. I know that our superintendent and the staff are gonna continue to work hard and diligently to look into those ongoing concerns and any other concerns that might come forward. So I just want to, again, ask for a little patience and reiterate that we're doing the best that we can. And everyone on this board wants to make sure that everyone feels like they are, like they are being listened to and, and that everyone knows that we are looking into those concerns. So thank you again for bringing that forward. And thank you, Dr. Avila, for keeping us up to date on, on that. I know, we know that it's not over yet, so please continue to update the board as, you know, testing and investigations continue in regards to the health concerns of some of our school sites. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Montez. Okay, mine are probably gonna be short as well. First of all, welcome back to everyone. Everyone comes to the board with many different concerns, coming from many, many areas under our scope. I've often used, with the superintendent and close friends, I feel like a plate spinner. For those of you old enough to remember Ed Sullivan, the guy's sitting there spinning a plate, and there's about 10 of them. By the time he starts first one, the last one is, by the time he gets 10, the first one is about to fall down. So that is the work of a board member and a superintendent, probably a teacher and administrator and everyone else that works in education. That's how it was when I was working. That's how I hear it still is, so many things do not change. Everything that we are working on is trying to align everything with the strategic plan. That is our model. I want to thank REA for aligning with Dr. Avila's vision for reading. And that, that's an excellent thing to do, give our kids books. Jumping around here to another plate, this is a work in progress as well. I love the colors. My one comment, other than that, the colors, I heard it went to print four times before this version came out. So this may change yet. My, my comment is, I want all the kids. I don't want all the board members and adults.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah. If I wanted to look at me, I'd look in the mirror. Nonetheless, I, I love the colors and I love the model. Thank you. Let's see. I haven't been really excited about a program that's coming in over at Kolb. Most, most of you probably know that I'm a ham radio operator. Been one since, well, in interest since the 60s, and that was my adolescence. I still hold my ham license and interest in it. But Kolb Middle School just put up their antenna and their tower. Their call sign is W6KMS for Kolb Middle School. They have 35 interested students, and they were supposed to meet today, so I've yet to hear that feedback. It aligns with STEM, because in there, it relies on electronics and physics and math. Teaches you about the weather and propagation, and it's a lot of hands-on. I probably have a bad roof because of the many times I went up there to work on antennas. So that was my first love, 'cause every two years, they're, they're coming down when the, the wind blows. That's about all I've got. We do hear your concerns. I have been asking about work orders and a tracking system, how we do it for some time now. It probably should be brought up in priority. I can work with you and let you know how other, our district used to do it. They used to use a software package. And I know that looking into things, there was one point of contact in Maintenance and one point of contact at the site.
Right, that's what you need.
Other than that, you've got 66, 80 people from every site calling Maintenance, and that, they can't get anything done. They're spinning their own plates. So, Dr. Avila, I'll probably contact you about that.
And I will ask Mohammed to give us an update on that, because that's already in.
Okay, if, if the board could get an update, that'd be great. If you have something tonight, please.
Yes, we just implemented new work order systems that gives a, it's a real-time update. Not only MNO, staff, seat update, anybody from the districts can see the status. If I'm the principal, I did a work order, I can see daily update what's going on, where do I stand, and when, expected date of completion of that work order. So I will give you a very thorough, right up at the Friday, so board can see. It's currently, it's working. It's a new system, and everybody trained. They need to learn how to use the systems to see the status of their work order. So this is a major shift of how we do business now versus how we used to do business.
The weak link that was apparent at the district I used to work at upon implementation was Maintenance filling out the paperwork on a daily basis. So if they did three or if they did 20 work orders, it takes a while to change a person's work, workflow, so to speak. But it, it took a couple of years for us over there to get everybody in line, and we can do it. Now you've, you've heard we are working.
It's, it's an online system, so again, it's district-wide. Everybody has access to it. It's, it's a real-time.
Okay. Ms. O'Kelly had her.
Well, yes, I was just gonna add that I think it would be beneficial to have one key person in Maintenance doing all the updating, and then one key person at each site to receive the information, so that it doesn't just... And then others can access it if they want to, but somebody in charge.
So the way it works, the system works, Ms. Kelly, the update is as, if I'm the sign to that work order, as I'm doing the work, I, I go in the systems and give the status. So, so the school see the update real-time. So it's not that they're waiting until the work is 100% done. They can see the progress every day. So some of the work orders.
Or they can see that there's no progress being made.
You're correct. You're correct.
And, and it gives, it gives the district, it gives the district an opportunity to see where maybe some work orders might be lacking or taking too, being postponed too long.
You're correct, and we're monitoring daily. We, we know where they stand and why. What is the delay? So there's a, we get feedback from the, from the, our staff.
It's a good system. It's a good system.
Yes, yes. It's a real-time. It's a system-driven.
Let Dr. Avila have, Ms. O'Kelly.
Our maintenance department is wonderful. They really are awesome. They took good care of me at Eisenhower. And so this isn't any slam on them, but it is frustrating to not know what's happening with your work order. Did they even get it? Are they starting on it, you know?
You're correct.
So the sooner the better that we can input this system.
It helps them as well, not have to, you know, answer a million calls a day as far as what's going on with their work order. They can refer people to the system to where they can get live updates on it.
Dr. Avila?
Ms. Islam, I just wanted to verify that also, as part of this process, the originator is the first to be notified that their order has been received. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Wow.
So, again, the moment that the work order goes in the system, they, they've been notified, and we acknowledge the, 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 the clock is running.
Good.
Mr. Ayala?
This has taken a while to get to this point. I'm surprised too, 'cause I wasn't, didn't wanna say anything, but I'm excited that we're moving in this direction. You know, I've been on the other end myself. You know, I was a teacher, and I remember I had the work orders. Uh, when are we gonna get air conditioning? Well, that, that order went in for like twenty-five years.
Right.
And guess what? We still didn't get it. But that was all right. That's just the way it was back then. We've moved in, 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 in many positive ways. This is, this is great news. Let's just hope that it works out and satisfactory to everybody. But uh, I gotta give the ladies in attendance tonight a lot of credit for uh the, the positive things that are happening right now. So, thank you.
And just want to add that um, as with the maintenance orders or requests, we have also beginning to implement our travel requests electronically and to be able to reimburse employees who travel in a much timelier uh way to expedite and really bring innovation to the way that we operate here as a district office to minimize the disruptions triggered or caused by the bureaucracy sometimes of a system.
Excellent.
Dr. Avila?
One more. Wait a minute. Did you have something, Mr. Montez?
I'll wait.
Mr. Martinez, if board interested to see the system, we can do a PowerPoint at the next board meeting to see. So, you can at least have an idea how system is operating in the district.
I, I would like to see that, yes.
Okay. We would be glad to do that.
Mr. Ayala?
We, we may need a follow-up, uh, 'cause I was thinking, you know, there's two sides to every story. Uh, might need a representative from maintenance come up after the system is in progress. We may find that they're undermanned or they need extra resources. And, you know, that's, that might be a tough one there, but if that's the case, it's better to know what we need to do altogether so that we can uh cross that bridge when we have to.
I'll work with staff to prepare an update and then a presentation to the board.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Yeah, I, I just, I just forgot two things really quick. Um, I just wanna say uh, for Mr. Bruce.
Yes.
Uh, word on the, word on the district street is that you're doing a good job. So, uh, welcome to our district and uh keep up the good work. Um, and then the other thing, I just have to high-five you guys. I already high-fived Ms. O'Kelly, but those three hundred thousand dollars might not be a lot of money, but it's three hundred thousand reasons, uh, you know, that uh.
Going to our kids?
That's much.
Going to our kids, right.
So, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Mr. Islam.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Can I make a comment on that?
Please.
I guess that time of the, of the evening. Yes, we are receiving some money, and uh, I, I would like to say that, you know, we weren't attacking anybody. We're not trying to put anybody out of business. This district, we try to play by the rules and we, and we try to be more than fair with all the vendors. But I will say this, you know, it has to be reciprocated. It isn't a one-way highway. And we had high-ranking officials, won't mention any names, who requested information to be sent back, like a phone call, return, a letter, those, that. The lines of communication stopped. So, when lines of communication stop, what choice do you have? So, we had to get our resources together because we had to do the right thing for this community. So, uh, you know, whoever's listening, uh, you know, things can be avoided with communication. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Ayala and board and superintendent and Mr. Islam. Okay, uh, we continue with D, public hearing. Open public hearing. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So, move?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, can I hear your ayes, please?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, it's unanimous, and the public hearing opens at eight oh seven. Any person wishing to speak on the item on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. One, public hearing. Pursuant to Government Code Section four-two-one-seven dot ten, the Board of Education will consider for approval an agreement between the district and Train U.S. Inc., further known as Train, whereby resulting in energy cost savings and other benefits to the district. Uh, reference D one point one. Um, do we have any comment, Dr. Avila?
We do not.
Is anybody here from Train?
Yes.
Would you like to make a comment? You, you came to our meeting, you might as well just say one comment.
Probably wants to see if it's approved later on. This is just the announcement of public hearing.
Okay, it's public money. Why shouldn't we?
I'll, I'll, I'll keep it short. Um, my name is Sol McRoy. I'm here from Train. Um, I also have Adam Whitworth here, our comprehensive solutions leader from Train. If you remember, a, a few board meetings ago, um, we came in and discussed an energy efficiency study that we were performing for the district. And out of that was gonna come out some energy efficiency measures that mostly were gonna benefit air conditioning equipment, um, lighting equipment across the district. Um, we also managed to squeeze in some water conservation items, um, and also some high-efficiency transformers. So, um, overall, it's a really good project that we were able to build. And over the fifteen years uh that, that this, uh, that this project will be paid off of, um, the district is gonna realize an additional savings of almost twelve million dollars. Excuse me. Um, twelve million dollars additional to the general fund. So, we think it's a great project, um, and definitely think it's great use of the public money. Yep.
Ms. O'Kelly?
Uh, well, I had this question to ask later, but I'll ask it now. My concern, I, you know, I think it's a great idea. My concern is if we take fifteen years to pay it off, by that time, won't a lot of these things be old and need to be replaced again? And then it's just gonna be a perpetual cycle of financing this huge amount of money?
Yeah, yeah. I understand that question. The average life cycle of the equipment that we're putting in is about twenty-two years. Um, the, the district has kept their air conditioning units for a lot longer. Um, a lot of the replace, units that we're replacing are almost thirty years old at this point. So, we think you'll get a fair amount of life out of them, uh, well beyond the fifteen, fifteen-year period.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any more questions, comments, discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, a motion to close public hearing.
So, move?
Second.
Thank you, and can I hear your votes, please, board?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the time is eight-ten. Public information. Williams, inspection report, reference D two-point-one. Just going to go back there. If I remember right, there was nothing to report.
Right.
Okay, there is nothing to report. The schools are Bemis, Boyd, Casey, Curtis, Dunn, Frisbee, Jay Hugh, Kelly, Colb, and Rialto Middle School. All right, um, consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will, will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action. Uh, we are moving to approve consent calendar items, reference E through J. Motion and second, please.
So, move?
Second.
Thank you. And vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. I don't see where... Okay, that actually does approve them. That wasn't just a motion to, to move them in. Okay, we continue with K, discussion action items. Can I have a motion and a second on K one, please?
So, move?
Second with discussion.
All righty, we have a motion and a second. Um, can I hear your, your vote to bring this item to action?
We, we should probably read out.
You want the discussion first?
Yeah.
Okay. Ratify an agreement with Twining Consulting to provide field and/or implant testing. In-plant testing, meaning onsite, and special inspection services for light poles, bleachers, and a press box at Eisenhower High School Stadium. Project for a cost not to exceed eighty-one thousand and nine hundred and sixteen dollars to be paid from Fund Twenty-One, Measure Y, Series C, General Obligation Bond Fund. Ms. O'Kelly?
Well, in item uh H point five, we approved an increase of twelve thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars because we had a lot of rain last winter and that slowed down their work. And for some reason, we have to pay for that. So, the total cost to Twining Consulting had, had ridden, risen to seventy-four thousand one hundred thirty dollars. Now, we're being asked in item K one to provide testing for light poles, bleachers, and a press box for a fee of eighty-one thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars. That's a total of the, the two amounts of a hundred fifty-six thousand forty dollars just for field testing. And in the write-up in the back of the agenda, it said that they didn't know we were gonna have light poles, bleachers, and a press box. But as far as I knew, and I was on the Measure Y uh committee, uh, we were always going to have those items. So, why were they not included in the original bid? And why are we paying so much extra money?
Mrs. O'Kelly, we have somebody from the, our CM who oversee the project is here. I will ask him, please, uh, an, answer to the board concern. And uh, my director of facility, Iris Chu, also here.
Welcome, Ms. Chu.
Good evening, um, distinguished board members, board president, Dr. Avila. The write-up may not uh give you a, a, the complete clear story. They, they knew that uh we will have light pole and bleachers and the press box. But at the time when we uh, when we solicited proposal, when we scrambled everything together, tried to uh jumpstart the project, they didn't have the DSA-approved plan with details enough for them to give us good estimate. And these uh items are made out of state, in other states. So, uh, they would need more information, structure information in order to get their counterpart in other state to uh give them a pricing. So, they waited and waited. Then the project started and get going. They, they couldn't um stop the project. So, they had to provide services, implant and onsite services for the installation of the light poles. Uh, but at that time, we still waited for the bleacher to be approved by DSA. And there uh was quite a lengthy delay. And finally, in May, we got the DSA approval on the bleacher and the press box. So, they were able to provide a, a good proposal at that time.
So, just to, to test for the light poles, the bleachers, and a press box is an additional eighty-one thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars?
Yes, uh, it is a um pretty big bleacher on both sides of the new stadium. And uh, it involves out of state. They have made in Texas.
Well, I'm just confused because the, the testing for the entire stadium is only seventy-four thousand. But for the bleachers and the press box and the light poles, it's more. It's almost eighty-two thousand. Why?
Yes, uh, the stadium, as big as it is, mostly is just fields. And the um, most tests, uh, required tests done to the fields uh related to the soil condition, the, the moisture level, and the compression of the, the soil. Uh, so, uh, other structures, we have uh the ticket booth and restroom, a small construction. Uh, and the bleacher is the largest structure of the stadium complex.
Okay, I, personally, I would have approved, I would have appreciated if in, when we've approved things before for this, that it was added into the write-up in the back, that this does not include the price because it seems like we're always getting hit again and again and again. So, if that's made clear, at least we know to expect that.
I understand.
Ms. O'Kelly, um, the board, I, I may ask our CM, who has a direct oversight of the project, and they're professional, may be, may comment on this matter, please?
Board members?
Board members, hi. I'm Doug Worrell. I'm with NEV Construction, and I've been the project manager at Eisenhower High School for most of your projects out there recently, starting with uh years ago with the data infrastructure. What Iris was telling you is, is accurate as far as the costs are concerned. Uh, Musco light poles alone can run anywhere's, we have five of them. Three of them which are a hundred feet tall, two which are ninety feet tall. There's extensive welding on each of these poles. Um, there's extensive um onsite, and they're based in Iowa. There's extensive continuous welding inspection required. And they have thirty-five-foot um precast concrete foundations, which also require continuous inspection. I think the actual um time that they were in the shop was about four weeks. So, you would have, um, just for the Musco poles alone, probably about maybe fifteen to twenty thousand dollars worth of expensive uh inspection costs alone. So, um, as far as the cost of the eighty-one thousand, it, it seems like a, uh, to me, a very reasonable number. Uh, the bleachers, which are based in, are being made in Texas, as we currently are uh talking right now. They're supposed to be delivered to the site in about three weeks. Um, those are gonna be in the shop for about, I think those are about a six-week process. And again, there's a lot of welding involved. Uh, there's my material identification, which is an ongoing, continuous ID. The welding, again, is an ongoing, continuous inspection. And so, you have to have someone there from when they open up the shop to when they're gone home at the end of the day. So, they're required to be there all day long when they're working on the project.
Okay. So, I guess when I saw field testing, I thought that was like testing the soil or something. You're testing the actual things that are being built to put on the ground, right?
Correct.
Underground too, the uh, the hundred-foot poles are gonna have thirty-five feet deep of uh foundation?
The foundation goes on about twenty-five feet, and there's about ten.
Underground?
Yeah, there's about ten feet of it that's actually sticks up above ground. And they will actually, these are all slip-fit. They'll put, they're made in three sections. They drop the first section down. And it's just a friction fit on top of the uh precast concrete. It's like a pillar. And if you go out, you can see the pillar. You, they see about three feet of it sticking out of the ground right now. And then about another ten to twenty feet of that goes up inside the pole, and they just stack three more sections on top of that.
Yeah, I mean, you figure a sixteen-foot pole needs to be buried like four feet. Can imagine for a ninety or a hundred-foot.
Yeah, these, these are, these are calculated for the, and also for the wind load in Rialto, which is.
Right, that's true.
It's not windy here.
No, no, not at all. It's never windy here.
So, it, it doesn't say it directly, but it, it sounds like this is also for the cost of the materials, a pole itself, basically.
No, this would be just for the inspection of that. Yeah, inspection costs.
I'm the wrong work line.
Inspection costs, when, when you're, it's continuous inspection, it, it can add up pretty quickly. And this, that's a DSA requirement. It's a state requirement.
Well, you said, how many light poles?
There's five.
Five light poles, both sides of the bleachers?
Yeah, it's three on the home side and two on the south side.
And uh, both sides of the bleachers, correct? All the bleachers?
Mm-hmm.
And then um, and then the press box?
And the press box, yes. That's another item. That's, that's a separate, it's provided by the bleacher um manufacturer, but it's built a separate facility, so that also requires inspection as well.
And if anything, if anything that is not in code or out of code, all that, that's where any issues would be addressed?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Well, I appreciate your explanation. I did not realize what was involved with the testing, you know?
It's, it's, it's pretty substantial, yes.
Wanna make sure no babies fall through these new bleachers.
No, 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 no. That won't happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Avila?
Those three hundred thousand will come in handy for some of the stuff here.
May I add something? These testing and inspection are required, especially for the structural strength.
And, and could you just state, uh, and could you just state what DSA stands for for the public? Because you mentioned them earlier, in regards to how you have to wait until they approve, uh, give approval for a lot of this. Could you just state what DSA stands for?
Division of the State Architects, uh, State Agency in, uh, charge of oversee, oh, public, especially the school K-12 and the college, uh, construction projects.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Iris.
Dr. Avila, you had something?
Yes, and something beyond just this particular item. I know that other questions and concerns have surfaced, uh, recently regarding contracts and amendments to contracts. I have spoken with staff to come up with a protocol, uh, with visuals to have us monitor, uh, each of the contracts and any amendments thereafter. Uh, with the Board's permission, I will arrange, uh, with staff to have a, a study session to give us a little bit more detail of the nuances that go into the construction of, of projects and, and schools. And then a third piece that I am going to consider is, uh, reaching out to, uh, council to help us on the front end of developing contracts, to make sure that the language that we insert into our contract protects, uh, the district and that it includes language that will, uh, prevent any, uh, efforts by any of the companies to abuse the contract with vague language that can, they can, that, that can then be, uh, exploited.
Well, if it hasn't been done already, that's a very smart move, Dr. Avila.
And so, it will be a three-piece process to, again, look out for the interest of our resources, because we can better use some of these resources for our kids.
And we wanna thank everyone working hard with, in, in partnership with this district. Uh, I don't think, uh, raising questions or concerns warrant any, uh, suspicion or any allegations. Just, um, we, you know, in the past, we, we've learned that if we're not careful, um, you know, uh, money can really easily dry up really fast. And we wanna maximize every tax dollar to make sure we're getting the most bang for our buck, particularly for the, the school projects, the much-needed school projects, like preventing babies from falling through the bleachers that has in our high schools.
Which did happen one time. The old one, the two-year-old fell.
Do, do we have any more discussion? Okay, can we move on with the vote, please? Can I hear the Board ayes, please?
Aye.
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 Thank you, unanimous. Okay, can I have a motion and a second on K two, please?
Move to approve K two?
Second? Do we have a second?
Uh, uh, second.
Thank you. K two, approve an agreement with scholast, Scholastic Education to provide systemic professional learning and ongoing job-embedded coaching to support middle school history, social study teachers, coaches, and administrators, effective October first, twenty seventeen, through February twenty-eighth of twenty eighteen, for a total cost not to exceed forty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars, to be paid from unrestricted general funds. Okay, is there any discussion?
Just like to say, I think items two and three are gonna provide some excellent, uh, resources to our staff, and, uh, I'm excited about both of them.
I, I'm sure they're looking forward to it as well. I agree with you. Okay, can I hear the Board ayes, please?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. Can I hear a motion and a second on K three, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. K three is to approve an agreement with Scholast, yeah, evening's getting long. With Scholastic Education to provide systemic professional learning to support transitional kindergarten and kindergarten teachers, elementary administrators, and intervention strategists, effective September seventh, twenty seventeen, through May thirtieth of twenty eighteen, for a total cost not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, to be paid from Educator Effectiveness Fund. Can I hear the Board, uh, vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And a motion and a second on K four.
Move to approve K four?
Second.
Thank you. K four is to approve the agreement with Train U.S. Inc. to notice, to proceed, with notice to proceed contingent on District's ability to secure financing for approximately eleven million over fifteen years for the project of implementing district-wide heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, HVAC equipment, LED lighting, and energy management system upgrades. The District will make the final determination of choosing the financing partner. The financing agreement will be presented to the Board for approval at a later date. Can I hear, well, do we have any discussion?
That, I think we-
Well, I just wanna, yeah, I just wanna make the point that we're expecting to not only get the eleven million back, but an additional twelve million, up to twelve million, in savings. So, I just wanted to clarify that, um, and one bit-
Thank you.
One, one comment?
Please.
Perhaps, uh, would help us for the longevity of the units, any recommendations that we could pass on to maintenance to help, uh, maintain those units? I, I, I'm sure that's probably protocol, but, you know-
For eleven million dollars, they better darn-
I know.
Help us through the way there.
But sometimes a shade structure or just the, the preventive maintenance procedures. Every, you know, forty-five days, you must clean and service the, uh, you know, the filters and-
Should be covered, should be covered, correct?
And if something goes out, eighty percent of the time, it's a capacitor or something.
Um, I just, yeah, I can speak to that real quick. Um, yeah, we have a pretty substantial training program with any other projects, any equipment we're installing, whether that's HVAC or lighting, it comes with training for the maintenance staff. Um, additionally, the new units will come with warranty as well. Um, and since this is the fourth phase of us working with the District and the maintenance staff, we've gotten to know the staff pretty well, um, so, and, and they've been taking care of the equipment that we've been putting in over the last couple of years. So, we've got a pretty good, uh, synergy with the District Maintenance Staff of making sure that all the equipment is being taken care of in the right way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, uh, can I hear your ayes, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. I don't believe it, last page. Okay, uh, can I hear a motion and a second on K five?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm not sure how you're gonna work that out, Nancy.
It's a tie.
Yes, exactly.
Well, we have to vote on both of those.
Is there a preference as to which one of you does the motion?
I can second it.
Thank you. Just for the record. Okay, K five is to adopt Resolution Number seventeen dash eighteen dash oh six, excusing the absence of Board President Dina Walker from Wednesday, August ninth, twenty seventeen, regular board meeting of the Board of Education. And can I have a, a motion, or I'm sorry, your vote, please?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And a motion on K six, and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Um, K six is adopt Resolution Number seventeen eighteen oh seven, excusing the absence of Board Member Nancy G. O. Kelly from the Wednesday, August ninth, twenty seventeen, regular meeting of the Board of Education. Can I hear your vote, please?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Okay. We're lucky to have three votes that capacity.
I would, I would have rather been at the board meeting than when I, where I was.
I understand. That'll teach you for drinking water. Don't drink the water, remember.
Make sure you say water.
Okay, um, a motion and a second on K seven.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. K seven is approve the recommendation of the Administrative Hearing Panel for stipulated expulsion case number seventeen eighteen oh one, and reinstatement for case numbers twelve thirteen ninety-eight, and Echo Echo, or EE seventeen eighteen oh one. Vote by Board members, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, and who wants to do the, the honors for adjournment? A motion, second.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Tonight, we adjourn our school board meeting with a moment of silence for Ms. Isabella Davidson. Ms. Davidson, as you heard at the beginning of this meeting, was a beloved Rialto community parent, volunteer, and worked twenty-nine years as a nutrition service worker, mostly serving students at Hugh Banks Elementary School, where countless students affectionately called her Grandma. Ms. Davidson passed August ninth, twenty seventeen, at the age of sixty-nine. And, uh, we've already taken the moment of silence, so, thank you very much, and, uh, Ms. Davidson, you will be missed, even though you were known as Grandma or the Lunch Lady. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Okay, it is eight-thirty-three, and we are adjourned.